This meeting of the guests in City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
President Echols is absent today and the meeting is being chaired by our President Pro Tem, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Father. We thank you for this opportunity to be here today. We thank you for allowing us to be here today. We ask that you would be among us, lead us, guide us in the decisions that we are making today for the good of your people. We ask that you continue to bless the leaders of our country and that they may continue to make decisions that are pleasing to you. Bless all of our troops who are in harm's way, send them home safely. Be with us today as we go through this meeting and we will continue to give you all the praise and glory. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in Council meeting held on May the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Number six. The Chair, we entertain a motion to ratify payments of the camp for the week of May the 25th through the 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, we probably don't have any today, unfinished business. A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 425 Broad Street in District Three owned by Sarah Moss. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on May the 1st. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I would ask for an additional 30-day table based on the Building Department recommendation.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 437 Broad Street in District Three owned by Sarah Moss and Branch Banking and Trust Company. This resolution also was tabled for 30 days on March 27th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, again, based on the Building Department recommendation, I'd ask for an additional 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Number nine, this is time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition.
Miss C.
Miss C, yeah.
I don't have C. I don't have C on my...
Resolution or an abatement.
C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance in District Four at 211 Ruth Street. The owners is Monica Mack, it was tabled for seven days on 529 12. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, on the recommendation of Building Department, I actually asked for a 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for an additional 30 days.
I apologize, that wasn't on my sheet. Number nine, this is time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Mayans Mason Cuisine has applied for restaurant retail liquor license at 486 George Wallace Drive in District Four. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
This 211 Ruth Drive?
No, no, no. The alcoholic beverage license.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is number 10. It's a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 921 West Steer Lane in District Two. Cassandra Joyce Allison Green, Richard Thomas Allison, Michael Leon Allison, Exchange Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in...
I don't see...
That's not going to be the one.
Yeah, I'm looking, Gordon, I can't find it.
Okay, apparently I've got some wrong information here.
I think you've got last week's agenda.
Nah, it was this week, surely, because I'm front.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's see where we are now. I'm sorry, let me figure out where we're at.
You should be on bid 3201.
Okay, the next one's a resolution ordering bid number 3201 for computers and related equipment.
Right. Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And that went to PC Mall Government Incorporated. Okay, number 11 is a resolution authorizing public hearing on the fire code.
Mr. President, the date for the public hearing will be on June the 26th and the clerk's office will provide publication of that for two weeks prior to the public hearing.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 12 is a resolution authorizing settlement of claim. It's with Claude and Linda Owens. Yes, number 12, settlement of claim.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed.
Same.
We have one extension, motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution accepting easement from George L. Woods for the Stroud Avenue Januage Project. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion, we adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 14 is a resolution authorizing lease agreement with the Greater Housing Authority for a COP program, and it's for one year.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
We don't, we're not discussing anything today.
Ah, well, we kinda got, we kinda got threw off here on my...
Let me, let me throw in a little discussion.
We can discuss some of it.
This is a program where we have police officers that move into our public housing and it's really worked well. It turned our public housing into slave neighborhoods and good neighborhoods and it's just been a wonderful program over the years. That's what this is about. So we got a motion approved. Yeah, motion and second.
Yeah, motion and second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution accepting drainage easement.
15.
Oh, well, 15?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Got thrown off here today. Authorizing agreement with New Canaan Baptist Church for disconnect and reconnect of a sump pump line to the stormwater drainage inlet. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is part of the Stroud Avenue Drainage Project that we have in progress, that we're in progress of working now.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 16 is ordinance amending city code section 74-233 and 74-263 regarding municipal sales tax and use holiday sales tax. This ordinance exempts certain covered items from sale and use tax on the first full weekend of August 2012. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, we didn't discuss this upstairs, but Roger, isn't there a time frame on this one? We okay? It's okay. I know it's gotta be so many days in advance for them to do their machines or whatever they do. So we okay, okay? Okay.
Okay, number 17, that brings us down to new business. Do we have any today?
Mr. President, I have a couple of items that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. First being a resolution awarding bid number 3212 to Yamaha Golf Cart Company in Newman, Georgia for golf cart leases for the golf course.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think these replace our golf carts. And I think the lease came up in July of this year, is that correct?
Yes.
And the carts were getting supposed to have stronger batteries and everything, so to make it up to him. There's no more...
I think the main thing here, one of the main things is that the maintenance will be continued on by gas to golf carts because they're local and they're easy to get to. They've done us a fine job before.
Is any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Move to adopt.
We just voted.
We just did it.
Oh, I thought that was unanimous consent.
No, no.
Sorry about that.
Got some more new business?
I have one, Mr. President. This is a resolution 230. It's leasing 500 square feet at American Legion Annex Building to Moritz Gloucester Amphitheater to Etowah County Tourism Board for 10 years with two five-year renewal options.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, move to adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business?
Mr. President, I did have another item. It's a, that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing application for an approval of beer license for the Barbarian Challenge Event.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is for the Barbarian Challenge Event that was, that is scheduled for Saturday, June 23rd. We'll ask all people to consider coming out to enjoy that event.
Is that the one at the Falls Billy where they go through all the...
Yeah.
That's, that's...
It is, and I understand they have about 800 already signed up, so it's gonna be a big event. You could tell us all about it.
I tell you one thing, if I went through it, I'd need a beer.
Did we?
Bad, bad.
Probably more than that.
While we're in discussion, did you want to, did you want to give that anymore attention here since we're in discussion?
Again, I went up there real early last year and ran it just to make sure it was okay before they got started.
You must've got in the hooch before you got there.
Well, I will tell you that the wonderful and awesome upgrades to the Black Creek Trail make some parts of it a lot easier. So that's one downside to the, to the wonderful improvements the city has done. Now, this event is on June 23rd, is the Barbarian Challenge. We do have, I know as of a week ago, we had over 800 people registered. We did a little over 600 people last year. Still got three weeks to go for registration. It'll be a day-long event featuring hill climbs, hill descents, crossing the creek several times, mud pits under barbed wire, man-made obstacles, probably about a four-mile-long course. It's a great fun and great way to show off Nakalulu Falls Park. So we're thankful for you all for passing that, that beer license. And we hope you all attend. We can go ahead and get you a discount if you'd like.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I have three items actually that I'd like to propose for unanimous consent to consider today. The first one being a resolution awarding bid number 3210 to Castle and G Construction in the amount of $117,819.50. Ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. This is in accordance and in alignment with the Jaxx Agreement for the East Gaston Access Road. This is part of what was agreed relative to that Jaxx Agreement, so we're gonna see some positive activity on that property that's owned by the city and we should see some improvements and some, again, some positive activity here soon.
Any more, any more discussion?
David, I must say that that Jaxx building is coming right along over there. It's coming right along. We'll be eating, we'll have, be having fine cuisine in a very short period of time.
We, just to let, make sure everybody understands, they bought the property from us and that was part of the agreement for us to do the road, but they also are, are deeded us the property up here on Broad Street. When they tear the O one down and clear it off, we'll own that property right there as well.
Thank you.
And thank you for that, Mayor. Jaxx has been a good corporate partner, been a good partner with the city over the years.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for that because there have been a lot of questions that you just answered right there, you know, about the Jaxx project over on East Broad. So thank you for that input.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another item that I'd like to consider for, that I'd like to consider under new business today. It's a resolution appointing Deborah L. Howard to replace Larry Pat Williamson on the Gaston City Board of Education. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the only thing I want to say is we do appreciate the service that Mr. Williamson has, has given us during the term, during his term on the board, and we're also excited about having Ms. Howard become a, a member of the Board of Education. She comes very well credentialed and I'm excited about what she's gonna bring to the board.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have one final item. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3208 to National Bus Sales and Leasing, Inc. in the amount of $379,220 for five public transit vehicles. I'd ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just, just to clarify, these are the Dollar Ride small buses and we're gonna be purchasing again, five of these, and based on the feedback that we've gotten from, from the Planning Department, they, they are, they are well in need of replacing. So, so again, this is a meaningful purchase for us.
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't ask this upstairs, but the buses now, the surplus buses now will go on the public auction site, I guess, that's what we do with those, or can we, since they're federal?
Yeah, I think that's what they usually do. Need to check with Menra, but they, you know, when you take them out of service, they get so many miles or so many years. We've kept a couple of the big green ones.
Right.
And I would be interested in seeing if, if any of them are still pretty healthy. We might wanna hang on to them, 'cause we can always use them.
I was just gonna say, we could probably use them, and then, of course, if we turn them over to Parks and Rec, then they could possibly use them for some public transportation.
Yeah, 'cause all we gotta do then is furnish the driver and the gas.
Right, I forgot to mention that upstairs, okay.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, and this is a resolution appointing Robert Turk to replace Tom Banks as a member of the Board of the Gaston Airport Authority. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business? Being no further new business, that brings us down to department boards, community boards, et cetera. We're gonna go with Mr. Rick Vaughn.
No, no, no. We have a Gaston Library.
Oh, okay. Amanda, come on up, I didn't have you down on here. I'm sorry, I didn't have you here.
I'm Taffeta Bozeman, the Children's Director. I wanted to speak real quickly about what all we have going on this summer. We have a Storytime Program on Thursday mornings. We just finished that up for the summer. We'll pick it back up in August. We are gonna continue with our science programs on Wednesdays. So Wednesdays at 1:30 and 3:30, we will have our Science Wacky Wednesday Programs. The cost is $1 per child and we're asking parents to call ahead of time and sign their kids up. We have an exciting summer reading program planned. The Teen Zone has a theme of Own the Night. They're gonna have programs two days a week. Tuesdays, they will meet at noon for craft time. Thursdays, they will meet at 4 o'clock for programs. Some of those will include Tai Chi, a belly dancing program, painting, and book crafts. Our children's program theme is Dream Big Read, and we're asking kids to come and explore the different dreams they can have through reading at the Gaston Public Library this summer. We will be meeting Friday mornings at 9:00 a.m. and 10:30 a.m. June 8th through July 27th. We will take a week off the week of July 4th. This week, we're kicking things off with the Sundari Dance Troop, and we have the Wildlife Wonders coming, Downtown Dance Conservatory, Arthur Atsma, a magician, the McWayne Center will be coming, All Hands Productions, and we will wrap things up on July 27th with the grand finale at Marana Park. Tigers for tomorrow will be bringing a petting zoo, we'll have face painting, hot dogs, and games for the kids. It'll be an exciting summer. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. When you say children, what, what age are we talking about?
There's no age limit, minimum or max on the children's department. We usually have from three and four-year-olds up to about 12-year-olds.
Okay, I had a parent that called me, well, a grandparent who's got a grandbaby in town, and they were trying to find some activities for him, so...
Well, we would love to have them.
They were, I think they were five years old.
There's no library card required for the children to participate, and there's no reading minimum required either.
Okay.
Thanks.
You can, it sounds like y'all got a real busy schedule, you can look forward to the mayor coming, 'cause every time I have hot, every time I have hot dogs, he's always there. So I'm pretty sure he'll be there at the hot dog.
Outside of the mayor's office, that's the busiest place in the city.
Will we put this schedule, Mayor, on the public?
Yeah, that's what I was... Amanda, she gets on Channel 99.
Okay, 'cause I, again, like I said, I have this, this grandparent called my house, I think this weekend, and wanted to know what could they do with their little three, I think she's four years old, maybe five, I can't remember. And they were trying to get them in a program, and they, I think the why, you had to be whatever age it was, and they didn't make that call, but this is good.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Next, we have Kay Moore's gonna come and speak.
Thank you. It's unusual you get to see me two weeks in a row, but as part of the River Fest weekend this weekend, our downtown merchants are having a sidewalk sale. They're gonna bring their wares out to the sidewalk, have some great sales. We're going to have artists that will paint, be painting, and I hope, I hope my mayor's daughter's gonna be out there. She's got some canvases if she's gonna get there, so. Painting, and you could actually buy a famous, you know, Grace might grow up and, you know, be famous one day. You could have a before, a before fame painting. We're gonna have some musicians that will be around. The Boys and Girls Club has a new dance line, and they're going to be at the, what I'm gonna call Freedom Park, I don't know. You know, we don't really have a name. We need to name that something there at Fourth and Broad Street where the flags are. And they're gonna be there from, on Friday afternoon from 2:00 to 3:00, I believe, and just, we're gonna have a lot of fun that weekend. This'll be Friday and Saturday. So come down and shop, and shop local, and just visit with your local downtown merchants, see the artwork being done and the, and the music that's gonna be taking place also. Then Sunday, it'll be the Downtown Art Walk. We're gonna have, we've got a couple of different places. The Center for Cultural Arts has two new exhibits. One of them is by Andy Burl, and it's, it's Dirt, Water and Mud, Dirt, Mud, or something, but it's, it is amazing. It's one of the, one of the best exhibits we've had there in a long time. So on Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Cultural Arts Center, we'll have that, and we'll have Eric Wright, who is the Gaston Times photographer and worker. He'll have the cyclocross photo exhibit there too. And then at the Walnut Gallery, Mario Galardo's been extremely instrumental in putting this together. He'll have DeeDee Morrison. Now, you remember, you might remember that name from last week. DeeDee Morrison is the artist that we have, the big art sculpture on Court Street and Broad Street. So she's gonna have versions of that also now at the Walnut Gallery. So next, next Friday and Saturday, you can shop, be entertained with music and art and dance, and then on Sunday from 2:00 until, we'll say 2:00 until 5:00 o'clock at the Center for Cultural Arts and the Walnut Gallery, we'll have an art walk. So we invite everybody to come and see all of that. We're just real excited to be a part of this. We'll, I guess Sunday will be the conclusion to River Fest because it's the Downtown River Fest Art Walk. So if you're looking for something to do before the entertainment starts at the river, come on downtown and just enjoy a great weekend too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Ms. Linda Jackson, you're next, please.
To the council and to the mayor, I would like to thank, a few weeks ago, the chief came through our neighborhood in the Discu community, our district, which is District Five, Councilman Stewart, and he met some of the people who were in our, on my street where I live, and the people, it encouraged the people to see the chief come in the neighborhood because we have improved our neighborhood and encouraged others to be a part of the Neighborhood Crime Watch, and I want to encourage other individuals in other districts, if you do not, if the individuals in your neighborhood do not have a Neighborhood Crime Watch, we have seen a tremendous improvement in our neighborhood. About 80% or so, the mayor came through, he said one Saturday, I didn't see him, but he drove through, and it's improved. When, there generally starts out with maybe one or two individuals being a part of the Neighborhood Crime Watch, but the neighborhoods, neighborhoods do not know that when it's one or two and you don't have another, others involved, but your neighborhood improves, it's the one or two that everybody else is piggybacking off of the neighborhood improving. So when, so if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, and we're wanting everybody to become involved with the Neighborhood Crime Watch in the other councilman's districts because it has improved neighborhoods and has improved our neighborhood, and I wanted to thank the chief for coming through, Councilman Stewart for always being supportive, for the council for always being supportive, and the mayor of being supportive too, and the people in our neighborhood. It has encouraged them because of him coming through, showing support for what we're doing in our neighborhood, so I wanted to tell the chief, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us down to Mr. Rick Vaughn, Gaston Etowah Patriots Association Memorial Day Service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council, Your Honor, the mayor. I always say hello to the chief of police and the city attorney and city engineer. I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit from Marc Anthony. I don't come today to criticize the city, I come today to praise it. For those of y'all that did not attend the Memorial Day ceremony that was at the old Lemys Patriots Park on the 28th of May, you missed an event, because there were several firsts this time. The little parking lot that was to the right was full. I don't believe there was enough space to put another Kay Moore Smart Car in that lot. It was absolutely cram-full. This was the first time that the program was ever broadcasted by radio, WGAD, WJBY did it live. Phil Swindle, Gaston Media, has got it on tape. We hope maybe the city might consider putting that on Channel 99 for people to see, so our veterans that are in the nursing homes and assisted living facilities can see the program. It went great. Carl Brady was a tremendous emcee, and I wanted to thank, we worked with the mayor, we worked with members of the city council, Kerry Payne with Parks and Rec, Kevin Tallop, the young men they had up there. You, you don't know how hard those men worked, because of the elderly people that were coming up there, and they noticed that they might've been having a little difficulty walking and getting there. They were right on the spot with a little golf cart, carried them in. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Jay Holland estimated that he had counted by the number of chairs and people there that attendance was over 400. So, it was a tremendous program. Our next one is the 4th of July fireworks, which we do in conjunction with the Tourism Board, the City of Gaston, and Etowah County Commission. After that will be our Veterans Day program on November the 7th, and we invite all y'all to attend. Your honor, you know you have to do a welcome speech, so I'm giving you time to get that written up. But, I just wanted to tell you, you, you have no idea how much the Patriots Association appreciated the help and assistance that we got. We're working hard to continue to develop that park. The mayor's assistant, Shane Ellison, is working. We're waiting to hear back now, and we'll be picking up and moving the tank. We're gonna move that propeller, and that was an odd thing that I brought up, and people don't believe it, but that propeller, people that have seen it at the park, believe it or not, it weighs almost half as much as that tank we're moving up there. But, we're gonna move that out of the way, and we're working on several exhibits. We're talking to two individuals to draw us up a plan, so we can have a map to laminate and have it at the Patriots office with the proposed exhibit sites and what's gonna be done. But, I just wanted to come today and say that without the assistance of this council, this administration, and these people, and the outside from people who were not members of the Patriots Association, the news media, it was covered in Birmingham TV, covered our program. It was in Anniston. Without those people, we would not have been able to recognize those 400-plus individuals whose names are on that wall. And I just want to tell you, you need, you need to look at yourself in the mirror and say you did a job, well done. And on behalf of the Patriots Association, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. That brings us down to the marks by the mayor and council. Billy, you wanna go first?
Thank you.
Caught you off guard, didn't it?
Yes, you sure did. My goodness. River Fest this weekend. Be sure and make your plans to attend River Fest. It's one of those gala events that we have here in the city, and just like for y'all to come out and support it. That's all I've got.
Ian?
Hey. I'm off guard. Hey, Phil, don't we have the, the video from Memorial Day? You've already turned that over to them, and I think that's gonna be on Channel 99. You've already talked to them about that.
Can you get Brian a copy of it?
He's already got it, good, okay. And the library, I'm gonna tell you what, anything y'all can do, and you do a beautiful job of it every year. When you teach a child to read, you teach him to comprehend, and to me, that's all there is, because once he can read and comprehend what he's reading, he's got an open mind, and he just goes from there. So, I commend y'all, and y'all do a real good job. I appreciate y'all.
David?
Thank you. You catching us all off.
I'm catching all off today, hey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna take a moment to, to acknowledge the absence of our council president, Mr. Eccles. He's, he's, he's battling an illness, and so we do wanna offer him some well wishes and, and wish him a healthy recovery. We discussed some upstairs, Title Pawn and Cash Advance businesses, and, and our abilities, and many, many, many limitations relative to combating that at a local level. So, we're encouraging those who are as fed up with that activity as we are to appeal to our legislative delegation and, and, and have them to address it aggressively, because it is something that, that we are not happy about in terms of its, of its growth and its presence in the city, and we, we encourage business, but we encourage business that adds benefit and value to the city. And, and I think it's been well documented. They don't add any value or benefit to the city. So, again, we encourage those, to those of us who are very concerned about that, as we are, to reach out to the legislative delegation to ensure that we get, that it gets its attention at the state level. There are states throughout the Union that have addressed that, North Carolina being one. They've addressed it aggressively, and they've cleaned that type of activity up in their state, so we encourage Alabama to do the same. Do wanna thank the Times for the coverage relative to Black, the Black Creek Trail. I think that's gonna, that the, the presence of that and, and its importance throughout the state and throughout the country is only gonna grow as people become more and more aware of it. And, and lastly, of course, you know, I received some very disheartening news today regarding the Highway 411 project. You know, the, as, as we understand it, the fund letting is gonna be delayed yet again for another 30 days, and in line with what the, the state has told us, until the county commission signs off on the municipal agreements, they're gonna continue to delay this project. So, again, those of you who think that our 411 project's important, really need to appeal to your county commission, because therein lies our, our holdup. Thank you.
Bill?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about, someone said, you know, if you really wanna judge the quality of your city, go to your public library, and we have one of the finest, so I'm real proud of them. I also wanna thank Ms. Jackson for the work she does in her neighborhood. She, she works very hard, and she's made great strides, and thank the chief for participating in our, through our neighborhoods. That's, means a lot to us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Robert?
I just want to reiterate on the Black Creek Trail. I, I think if we can get our clubs around town who emphasize any healthy activities and exercise to start participating in that particular project, I think they would be very, very pleased. And I don't know how we need to do this. I know the Y has a program and several other groups, but they need to go up and check that trail out. I mean, it is something. I'm not that much of a healthy enthusiast, but I'm gonna go up there and start walking that trail, 'cause it's a, it's a great time of the season, and it's very, very nice up there. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to more people getting involved and more people using that trail as, as time go, and hopefully, the more people we get using it, then we can eventually get it finished from the Megan Boulevard all the way down to the Martin Wildlife Park. That's what we're shooting for. But, right now, people go up, I think they're gonna be very, very pleased with the trail, so I'm looking forward to it. That's all.
Mayor?
Yes, following up on the Black Creek Trail, and, and not only that, but it's a walk-in, bicycle, jogging trail. It's not for four-wheelers or three-wheelers or whatever, so, you know, in, in any of the parks, when you see people vandalizing, we had some graffiti in Cherry Street Park, and we got that painted the other day. But, you know, call the police, get a tag number, call the police. We're gonna crack down, we've raised the fines, and, and we've got too many nice places to get out and enjoy the city and, and have a good time to have people going around and trying to write graffiti and just destroy something for the, for no reason. So, we're gonna crack down on them, I assure you. Also, Hugh, if you would, 'cause I'll forget, and when they start to close Hines Road, have them to leave one lane open, if you could do that. Mr. Watley there in front of you, he'll come to my house if we don't. So, be sure and remember that, 'cause I might forget, but if they could just sort, put the cones up and, and close half of it, that'd be great, and that way people can still see through there. One other thing, you were talking about the, the Highway 411, that's been pushed back again. Is, is that because the county won't go ahead and agree to fix the bridge?
That's my understanding.
Well, anybody lives and travels up that way or in North Gaston, you know who to call to get that off of Phase 1 or whatever, so we can move on with it. We have a lot of things about to be taking place, to a lot of projects that's slowly gonna be starting, and so just bear with us on some of them, but all of them are gonna be big improvements, so we appreciate everybody being patient and trying to work with us. Thanks.
I do wanna say that, I'll kinda brag about our chief a little bit here. He's doing an excellent job. He's going out in all the communities, not just one district, but he's been in all districts. He's been in mine the last two weeks, no, he's been there twice. Anytime you need him, you call him, you just ask him for anything. He's always there, he's always polite, and he always calls you back, so that's, that's a real good plus, and he really cares and loves this city, and I really appreciate you, Chief, for doing that. And I do wanna say that this is the second week Mr. Eccles has been gone, and hope he comes back next week, 'cause I know all of us miss him up here, and I know all y'all miss him, and we just wish him a speedy recovery. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So may.
We're adjourned.